You ready?
Ready.
All right. Good evening, Littleton. Today is Tuesday, May 27th at 6:30 PM, and we'll call this meeting to order.
Yeah.
All right. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should decide who's the clerk tonight, Mark, if you're me.
I'll be the clerk.
We have an abbreviated agenda this evening due to a couple of absences. We'll start with Department Board Updates and Requests. Then we'll have public input and members' updates. Seven o'clock, we'll start a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. Eight-thirty, Select Board Discussions regarding town boundary markers, among other things. And we will adjourn promptly at 9:30 or sooner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The mail for tonight, we've got current vacancies on our boards. We've got opportunities through appointment by the Select Board of Agricultural Commission, Conservation, Economic Development, Historical, Master Plan, Permanent Municipal Building Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, and one appointment by the School Committee to be on the Finance Committee of the School Department. We sign up Littleton to receive public notifications for the Town of Littleton. Scan the QR code or register at www.littletonma.org/subscribe. Community impacts, public safety activity, town events, transportation issues, town meeting changes, public health concerns, town events. I already said that, sorry. Stay informed. Here we've got some decisions by the ABCC out of Boston that the Select Board was aware of when the ABCC conducted a compliance checks. And they've got Common Foods, Littleton Sub Shop. They did have a, their decision was a warning. And that was, and that was... The date of the hearing? I'm sorry, I'm missing it.
May 6th.
Oh, May, thank you very much. It was May 6th, 2025. And after the finding of facts, they concluded a warning would be appropriate. And then moving on to Littleton One Stop Liquors. Again, these all have been because of serving minors. And that hearing also was on May 6th. And also, the commission issued a warning which would be appropriate. And here we have, sorry.
There was one last time, too, there was a warning. We talked about whether we are going to send a letter as a follow-up. Have we done anything? Are we going to?
Well, if we want to, we have, to answer your first question, we have not. So, not sure whether you want to bring them in to understand also how you would want, basically, the temperament of the letter.
I think we should send a letter. I don't necessarily feel that we need to pull them in. I don't know if others agree with that or not.
What would the letter say?
Saying that we're aware of the violation, you know, that we, you know, don't, you know, it's just an acknowledgement that we know that this happened and give them another warning, basically, a warning from us that we're watching, too. So, that would be my, that would be my feeling for it. What do you?
It's got, the CC is the local licensing board?
Yeah.
So, they know that you are all aware? However you want to do it.
I don't, I don't feel that we need to. I don't feel strongly that we don't need to. I guess I would probably skip it. I think we do. I think it's, I think that when, when we're made aware of it by the Police Department, we brought them in and took action then.
But these weren't from the Police Department?
Right.
No, no, I understand. But I'm saying, like, we also can enforce issues, right? Like, and we now know, so if something happened locally, we would have this on their record in order to decide what, you know, what the consequences are. So I think it's sufficient that we are aware and they're aware that we're aware.
Okay.
That's just my, that's my take.
I'm okay with no letter.
All right. And lastly, with Town Mail, we've got a gift acceptance form from Sam at the library and the amount of $5,000. And the name of the party offering the gift was John C. Morrison and Eunice B. Morrison, Charitable Foundation. And it's in recognition of the library's good work to assist and to help and assist in the library's mission for library programming. Thank you very much for your generosity.
The Morrison Foundation's been very generous throughout town. I think they give to the Scholarship Fund and a couple of other things, too.
Outstanding.
Yeah. Much appreciated.
And that's it. Madam Chair?
We skipped over the 20B exemption number two. So let's jump back to there first.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We did?
No, we, that's the next on the agenda.
Next on the, yeah.
We just did the mail.
I know. But isn't that?
No, we just did the mail there.
So we're going to do number two.
All right. Now we can move on.
Mm-hmm.
Yay.
Okay.
All right, let's move on.
This is, as, with, from the cover letter from Alicia. She has expressed that we need to go through the normal process of exempting, exempting... Excuse me? Great if it fell over. Spence Cowett. And, you know, for that person to be able to work during the summer for Parks and Recreation. And the motion is part of the control sheet. I don't have the motion here.
Got the motion?
Yeah, I have the motion. So this is just a summer employment? It's not going, so it's not going to...
Yeah.
Yeah, because the app, maybe in our contract or something, somewhere, it should say what the expected end date is. Because I didn't, I just don't see it.
Okay.
It might be in here, I just never saw it, so.
Okay.
I don't have any other comments other than that.
Yeah, I mean, the position is summer.
Yeah.
Counselor, so I think we can imply it. It's a good point. You good?
Yep.
Moved the Select Board vote to acknowledge a disclosure by a municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract and approve the exemption of Spencer Caluette as a municipal employee in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B.
Second?
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And a Conservation Commission vote to authorize the commission to accept a gift of land located at 16 Dover Drive.
Correct. This is, this is something that is, according to the Conservation Agent, it is a parcel of land that is protected around its perimeter. And the Conservation Commission would like to be able to include that as protected land.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Let's go ahead.
Moved by the, moved that the Select Board authorized the Conservation Commission accept as a gift from John McSweeney the land located at 16 Dover Drive, Littleton, Mass., identified on Littleton Assessor's Map as U-23-16-0 and being the same land that was deeded to John McSweeney by Daniel McSweeney by deed record, deed recorded at Book 12395, Page 13, which parcel contains 2.66 acres, more or less, for conservation and passive recreation purposes under Article 97 of the Massachusetts Constitution. And on such terms as the Conservation Commission shall deem to be in the best interests of the town.
Second?
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. McSweeney. Now we've got public input, members' updates. Anybody want to go first, or shall I start?
I'll start.
Okay.
I, well, thanks to everyone for the great turnout for the Memorial Day Parade and the wonderful weather.
That was me.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I went to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee Meeting a few weeks back. And they're all on board with more sidewalks and the RRFs in town. And they are going to start working with Highway and the Town Administrator's Office to look at potentially what the ramifications and ability to change the main roads through town from state highways to local roads. All of the surrounding towns have the state highways as local roads through the center, which gives them more control. So they're going to come back with a report at some point on what the advantages and disadvantages are. I was approached by someone outside the Senior Center the other day saying, "We really love the Senior Center, but it'd be really nice to put a bench out front." And a while back, before the Senior Center was built, when Ed passed away, we talked about putting something with his name on it. So I think we should reinvestigate having a bench out there and with, you know, in honor of him, so.
Good call.
I like that.
Yep. Do you want to do that as something that you'd like the town to absorb? Or is that something that a bench would be part of a donation?
Well, Ed gave so much money to the Senior Center previously, so we should figure out if we, what we can do.
Understood. Okay. Yes, sir.
I think Highway might have something or there might be other alternatives we can look into.
No, absolutely, no. I'm sure the resource will be there. I just wanted to understand with how you wanted to do it going forward.
That's what I have off the top of my head.
All right.
Oh, wait, one more.
Oh.
The middle school play was two weeks ago. Oh, well, then, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I wanted to congratulate everyone that performed in it. I actually missed the performances. I was unable to make it, but I heard good things.
It's a madhouse, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I was going to say thank you to everyone who's involved in the Memorial Day Parade, especially John Borowski and the High School Marching Band. And many thanks to all those who helped prepare the common and the cemetery, including our scouts, among others. And thanks to everyone who attended. It was a really, it was a beautiful day and a really, a really nice ceremony and a lovely parade. I don't think we've met since the ribbon cutting, so.
No.
Thanks to everyone who pulled off the ribbon cutting. I think last I heard it was, what, we're estimating, what, 300 people?
Approximately.
Yeah, in attendance, which is huge. Jamar Sierra was there. And Jamie Eldridge sent a citation. So I wanted to thank Liz Tretiak and our vendors, PMBC, Eric and George and Facilities, and the many, many, many others who helped make all that happen. Middle school for, it's a madhouse. And I wanted to mention that I saw the Parks and Rec newsletter, and they announced the Long Lake contribution in, as part of their beach pass fee this year. And I know that's something that Clean Lakes and UJIM and Parks and Rec Commission and the Parks and Rec Department have all been working on in the past, in the, sort of behind the scenes. And I just think it's a great example of what happens when different parts of our government get together and work together to make things happen and so create some creative problem solving. And I really appreciate everyone's efforts there. Shade Tree Committee met on the 14th. They went over their bylaw. It's with Harrington. We're waiting for it to come back. And then they're going to take it over to the Planning Board, who is also looking at some tree conservations initiatives. So they're going to try to collaborate there. Clean Lakes was scheduled for May 20th, but they had to reschedule due to some technical difficulties. So, no update on that. That's all I have.
Not much for me. I did enjoy the Memorial Day Parade, and it was nice weather and it was a nice turnout, so. And thank you to John for many years. That's all I got.
A few, a few things I'd like to highlight. We are talking, I had talked to the DPW Director this morning. He still is not, does not have the Safety Zone signs in, but he anticipates they will be, they should be in this week. So, and I have sent an email to Department of Transportation about the flashing crosswalks. Mr. Rambaka, you had asked an email, I believe it was last week, that, about other crosswalks that would be available from the one that was approved by the state, the one through that the DPW Director had applied for?
I love it, Shaker Lane.
It's on, it's on, right. On Gold...
So there will be an RRF being installed at Goldsmith and Roxbury Drive?
Yes, thank you. And so, I had talked about what your email was and with the question about other areas. Was there a limit to how many we could do? What does this program usually do? Steve, Mr. Yonley had expressed to me, this is the first year that they've done that. There are no limitations, but there is a criteria. And the one that he had submitted appears to be the most appropriate one. But as I encouraged him to, let's just do a lot more on Goldsmith Street and just let them, let the state, and let's see how we can have a conversation with the state about that. So, so that's, that's progressing. I know it could be quicker, but it's moving. The paving will be starting pretty soon.
Which paving?
The paving plan for, I don't know the streets exactly.
The sewer plan or?
No, 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 no. DPW with the contract that I signed, the $526,000 one.
Etsel.
Is that Etsel?
No, it's, Ernie's Drive. Ernie's Drive.
Okay.
It was an E one.
The Cemetery Department, their building renovation RFP is with Kim Couvo. Ms. Couvo completed all three stages of becoming an MCPPO certified in a week, week and a half.
Great.
I was right.
Fantastic.
So, she has submitted for her, for her certification from the state. And we, as part of the update that I will be forwarding you is also informing you that Ashley Guvo in the Accounting Office will also go through the process. And that will be free of charge from the Inspector General's office.
Great.
And so, we're, the Building Department and Facilities is working for CO for 36 King Street. The well pump was installed at the Orchard, I believe, last week. Yep. And, and it is, it is not on town water. So whatever is coming out of there, that's, you know, and they're just going to continue seeing where that takes them.
But we will need to discuss switching the barn water over to the metered. So, because right now, the town is paying for the water meter that's going into the barn.
Okay.
So it both has, there's a well, but there's also town water supply to the barn. So that should, will need to be switched to be billed to Brandsfield.
Understood.
So I don't know when that's going to happen or who is, and I also don't know that John is aware of that. But I know Eric is aware of it. And so we need to coordinate with Light and Water to do that.
Okay.
And I can speak to John, but I'd probably prefer that Eric did it just to keep the lines of communication clear.
I will, I will ask him to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We understood that from the Building Department this morning, Department Head Meeting, 234 Taylor Street, a foundation permit was pulled. Another thing, 76 charging stations are going in an Amazon. At the Amazon, at the Amazon location, 76 of them. And they are moving forward on that. Another thing regarding Amazon, I believe, the mobile station would be, there'd be a line down, down the street with Amazon trucks with fueling. They're going to be doing mobile fueling on-site at night. So that takes away from any, any traffic. That would be right there at the corner, at the common. They'll be doing that. And I believe it's tomorrow evening, early evening, there will be a CERT training exercise of, at the Orchard in the house. And it's really, it's an aftermath of finding people after a tornado, after a hurricane, things of that nature. It's not, nothing's being destroyed. It's really just a search and rescue by, by the Citizens Emergency Response Team, CERT. And that will be held tomorrow night. And that's it.
Okay. You ready?
Jerry's on her way, so we have other things to...
Yeah, we can do public input.
I said at the last meeting, after the town meeting, that I recommend a public hearing be held with regard to the issue of property taxes. I'm repeating that request tonight. Since the last meeting, I've started to scratch the surface on what I heard in that hour-long discussion of public comment with regard to 37 Shattuck Street. I heard many, many issues concerned with property taxes. As a result, I've tried to scratch the surface. One item that I found is that, and I was surprised, Littleton has a property tax deferral program for seniors. It's eligible to all kinds of seniors. It's quite nice from the standpoint, you can defer $1 or you can defer your entire amount of property taxes. It doesn't require attorney. All you do is go into the assessor's office. You then go to the town clerk. You sign a piece of paper, and your property taxes get paid upon either the first of your death or the sale of your property. It all reads really, really nice. And so, I then learned, but there are only four residents taking, making use of it. So that struck me as being a little bit odd given the last town meeting discussions, comments, and the previous town meetings that I've heard with regard to property taxes. So I dug deeper. And lo and behold, what I suspect is the problem with the deferral program is that the dollar value hasn't been updated since 2014 in the November 12, 2014 special meeting. At that time, the concept was to bring it up to what's known as the circuit breaker that all residents of Massachusetts have connecting with regard to the dollar threshold with regard to their state income taxes. And that circuit breaker now has for a single person in a household a dollar value of $72,000. For a couple, the dollar value is $109,000. And lo and behold, we have an updated program, the deferral program, since 2014, such that the income level for a household is $55,000. Now, I think that's probably a pretty significant challenge for many households that they probably can't meet, they probably have more income than 55. I'm sure there's some that don't. But I bet there are a whole lot of households, some of which I bet are some of the people that are talking during town meetings, more or less protesting the dollar value of property taxes. And it seems to me like a program that the town has already got existing ought to be brought up to snuff to equal that circuit breaker. Or I'd like to have discussion in a public hearing or some other appropriate place as to why such, such an item shouldn't be addressed because I think it could be responsive to what I hear. I've got some other ideas, but I don't want to take up the time. I'm looking forward to your agenda with the fine income, you know, tonight. But did want to bring that one up because I think, I encourage some discussion. Happy to discuss this, anybody offline. But, but think something ought to be done in anticipation of more money-driven issues that are coming our way, whether it's Shaker Lane, you know, building, or DPW, or, you know, we can rattle off the list. There's too many of them that are coming up for me not to think that this isn't something worthy of time and consideration. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Jim, is that us or the Board of Assessors that?
Board of Assessors.
The Board of Assessors would raise that.
Okay.
You can sit right, your name tag's over there. You can sit down.
There's one over there.
Yeah.
Okay. There was a meeting that was held this morning with the finance team, the superintendent of schools also attended, and we had representatives from Vertex really trying to understand some of the shortfalls that, for 36 King Street. Originally purchased in the amount of $3.5 million. And there is approximately, there was bids that, specs that were written for it back in '23 and then early '24 for $3.4 million. And contingency has been used. And also, additional funds of approximately a couple hundred thousand dollars that were part... There was an article at town meeting recently, I believe it was, I think it was last fall, that it was, there were balances on certain capital projects that were left over, maybe a half a dozen. And they were all scooped up and identified and utilized for that. The Vertex met with Brian Forbes, and we went through the history and the scenario that was there and trying to understand. And basically, there was, there was a culmination of... There was a culmination of a timing issue. There was, it needed to, it needed to get done, needed to get done fast for a fall town meeting. The OPM was selected in December 30th, when finally informed of in 2023. Spring town meeting presented a $3.4 million estimate. But to try and do that estimate in that kind of a timeframe, it was, it was rushed. It was, there wasn't enough time there. And I believe that it, and I had asked the question of, clearly, what was the necessity of rushing it? It's not like anybody had to move in or we, something had to be done. But apparently, there was, the building But apparently there was, the building had been dormant for, for a few years. And there was a, from what I gather from other people that were here, there was a, a pressure to, to purchase the building within a certain amount of time because there were other, there were other interested parties or whatnot. So it was, it was the decision to move forward, purchase the property, and look at getting the appropriation in the annual town meeting of twenty twenty-four. The bid specs went out and the bid documents went out, I believe, in, in April of twenty-four. And that was the timeframe that was given to the architect, the designer, and the OPM. And it was something that there wasn't, what I gathered, there really wasn't the time appropriate to do the investigative evaluation of the building. There could have been a much more thorough if they had, let's say if it, if it was postponed till November. And it was something that was, felt that it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be sufficient for, for May, move forward. And, and that's what, and that's what we, the takeaway from there. So as, and unfortunately, as, as the contractor got into the building, more and more things were discovered. And there were, and what you have before you with these, with these sheets is, this is exactly what the takeaway from, from today's meeting with, with Vertex. And you can, you can see those are, these are all the, all the change orders. And there, they, there's different use codes for that. And if you look going from the left, your fifth column from the left going to the right, it says PCO reason. And you'll see the legend that's up there of, of reasons why, whether it's unforeseen conditions, scope changed by the architect, owner change request. It lists all of those, those areas. What, this has been, this has really been reached, come to the surface right now as a result of a couple of things. The insulation was, was never brought into consideration. And there's, and right now, as of last winter, as the facilities manager had, had explained to me, the heat is going right up through, through the roof, okay? And with the new roof on there, so here you have melting snow and everything like that. What that will do is that will melt to the sides and it creates ice dams. And you've got these massive things, massive ice dams, which create leaking and, and everything like that, just the worst-case scenario. So the other issue, as you can see, pretty much, number forty-seven down the first page, you can see HVAC attic unit replacement. And that was a decision that was not to pursue a change order at that time because the cost, as you can see, is, is over three hundred thousand dollars. They did replace some of the units that were up there. There was a fifteen-ton unit that is, that is up there. So when they did have the new roof that was, that was put on as that alternate during, with the bid specs, it was still, it was, it was, it was the decision of just continuing forward and just, it's a matter of maintenance and a matter of making sure it, it, it continues, it, it works. There were some smaller units that are up there that were replaced, but then there were some that are, have lived past their life expectancy. And it's, it's, it's not a matter of whether they will fail, it's a matter of when. So, you know, clearly, it, you know, the question was, I mean, I, you know, is there any, any areas of responsibility that could have been done a little bit better? And there was really, it's really just a matter of the timing issue just did not, just, it's no one's fault, if you want to say, I'm not, I'm not here to point fingers at anybody. But, so as the facilities manager, as my, with my updates, and I meet regularly with, with Eric, I had asked him about, and he gave me this update. And he had mentioned about the, the insulation. And so the takeaway from, another takeaway to conclusion of how I would recommend to, to the select board and the finance committee, we move forward, we would move forward on parallel tracks. And the parallel tracks would be considered that the most, the most important thing that we need to do is insulate, insulate the attic. That's step number one for a couple of reasons. Because it needs, it needs to be, the, the building really can't be occupied for at least twenty-four hours, once that blow-in insulation is in there and fumes, things of that nature. And it's thought of, okay, do it on a Friday, that way the whole weekend and, and things of that nature. That is approximately two hundred thousand dollars. That is not on here. And that's because that was, to get that insulation was done separately offline by our facilities manager and working with Diane Dickinson in, in, in our office that, through Green Communities. And the Green Communities can, can pay a, a portion of that two hundred thousand dollars, approximately eighty thousand dollars of it, seventy-something thousand. So we're looking at a hundred and twenty-six, approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, looking at the town's portion to, to put the insulation in. The other, the other track that we, we would need to explore is, it is the recommendation to do a full assessment of the mechanical options. There are, there are two ways to go. There's, we can do a hybrid, we can go the hybrid route in which you have the electricity as your daily operations, your daily, your daily heating and, and cooling and things of that nature. And gas is there as a backup because it, it, it's, it's right there. It's already, it's already gas, gas, gas-fed. But we're also, the other issue is, and as you, as you all know, by twenty fifty, we want to be a carbon-free, free area. And is it something that we want to look at in doing, going the full, full options of the, of the electrical? The hybrid option, there is, there is not, there is not any Green Communities money or money like that that's available for that kind of stuff because it is higher, because the gases is, is, is in there. We can, we will absolutely, we're continuing to look into the, the financial resources available beyond, beyond us for the, for a full electrical. And however, and how that would take place. And I know Mr. Rombacher, you know, knows a lot more about that than, than I do. He could probably speak to, to the advantage of that. So in that, but the first thing is to do the full assessment mechanical. The reason with the, the full assessment, it's a unique building in such a way that you have areas that are cut up and you have sheltered areas, and then you've got a massive hall with, with a music, with a music hall was. So there's a lot of different demands and challenges in order to be able to have the most efficient system there. And it is, and so it was the, the facilities manager agreed with, with the, with the assessment of having the full mechanical issue going, being, being reviewed. Doctor, and talking to Dr. Clinchy after, he, you know, he agreed with, you know, the, the school, the school department will make that, will make an investment, you know, a portion towards that. He agreed it makes sense. It's a long-term investment and it's something, you know, it's, it's a town asset. So he felt it's, it is appropriate to, to do. And, and you can, if there are any questions, I can, I can answer these on, on the, on the sheets here. The green areas where it says ready for PMBC, mostly on the second page, those are still being vetted by the OPM, the architect and the contractor. And those have not been finalized or submitted to the PMBC for, for approval as of yet. But everything else is clearly labeled with the, with the legend for the reason of where those change orders, the, the reason for those change orders and any potential comments that are associated with whether, whether it was approved. Grab that. So any questions? I'll try and do the best I can to answer anything.
Just to get an overview, so.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm reading this right. So we're basically short seven hundred, one thousand plus the one twenty-six?
No, sir. The, we, there's probably five hundred thousand total.
Okay.
Okay? So we get the hundred and twenty-six there. We're looking at at least the, the three hundred thousand for the new HVAC. But we would have to identify probably with approximately fifty thousand dollars to have the, the full assessment of the mechanicals and what, what, what the most efficient system in, in the building would be. So we're, we're hovering in the five hundred thousand range.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand then, I mean, you see at the bottom where I'm seeing this?
Right.
Why is that number not the?
There, because there are just, there were some things that have been taken care of. There are, these are the real big ticket items.
All right, thank you. The most.
So I, I understand that if the valuation of the building was hasty or rushed or had time pressure, that, that things could be missed. I guess in the letter that Matthew Sturt sent us, sent you, that you forwarded to us, the project director, he said that the project team had determined that some of these owner change requests were approved. Had, they, the project team decided that these had been approved. Like, the, the project team decided that some of these owner change requests were appropriate now that the contractor was on site and that we would do them.
Yeah.
And the three big ones, the electrical scope, the restroom, and the lighting came up to almost three hundred, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Right.
So I guess my question is, who was that team that decided? And who was involved in making the decision that that was fiscally responsible? Because now we're coming back and saying to whoever, to FinCom, to the taxpayers, or to, you know, like, we need, we need another three hundred thousand dollars to finish this building. So I guess like, who was included in that process and why wasn't that process? Why weren't we alerted sooner? Because I know when Ryan was here and giving us updates, I said, you know, are these, are these delays going to impact the budget? He said, no. So I don't know if he knew at that time or not whether these change orders had been approved. But I think it's safe to say that, you know, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of change orders is probably bigger than the contingency and probably would have blown out the budget. So, so where was the decision made, I guess is my question, and who made it?
It was collective. And I think the final, the final decision was through the recommendation from, from, from the engineer, the engineer consultant, the architect, the, the OPM, the Vertex, and, and the permanent building.
So PMBC was part of that, that loop as well?
I'm kind of on, over to you, Matthew. Like, I don't know how, and we had, according to this line item, we had two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in contingencies and we went to two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in our own change requests, which we already, right there, it's starting to blow out the budget. We know we're over budget at that point. So I don't know how we let this happen, right? I, someone should have caught this a long time ago before we did these change requests.
I, I do feel like there was, like somewhere there's a lack of oversight. Like, surprised that nobody knew, like, nobody, like, I didn't know about any of this until, you know, a few days ago. And, and I'd rather not, I'd rather not, I'd rather this be blameless and we find out the cause of this so it doesn't happen again. Because there's no quicker way to lose the trust of the people who are giving us money to do these things than coming back to them and saying, oops, we accidentally spent three hundred thousand dollars of your money and we didn't know that we did it. Like, that's just a bad look.
Well, I, I, I think in the, I think the marathon here was the idea of taking those ending balances for those capital projects and having that as a further safety net, if you want to say, beyond the contingency because it potentially could have looked like the contingency was going to.
Well, we shouldn't have turned even at that point of using that extra capital money. We shouldn't have approved any of these other contingencies until we knew that we had the money in the budget to do them. And obviously, we didn't have the money in the budget to do them before coming back to things that aren't even, that are more required.
Because that means we actually went overboard because that money paid for some of them that now aren't on here. I don't understand the rushed. I'm having trouble understanding why the estimate was rushed because we didn't, we didn't vote on it initially because it was rushed. And that gave it a whole nother year to get.
I think he said the assessment of the building was rushed and we purchased it before really understanding potentially what some of the issues of the building were. But I guess your point is, yeah, but then we had a year to look at it.
We purchased it. And it was going to go to town meeting to get the money to renovate it.
And we said no, yeah.
Until we had bids in hand. And we didn't go back to town meeting for an entire year.
The insulation seems like a basic thing to me. I guess I don't understand why that was not being addressed.
And this, and I remember at that point, when we came back to the town, we said, FinCom, pretty much, we had it, eleven months have gone by and now we're again rushed getting something at the last minute. How can this be? And I absolutely understand, let's be blameless. But let's also fix because this keeps happening. I mean, we don't, we don't seem to be learning our lessons.
I can't get a, I can't get my arms around, Jerry, to your, to your point. I can't get my arms around the urgency. Because that was one of the questions that, that I had for the, for the team, which included some of the people that have been moving around since minute one and actually some, some staff members that, that have been here. What is, what was the urgency? And it was just, you know, apparently because it was dormant for a while and it's, it was, it was three and a half million dollars to purchase it and, and let's go. And it was a, it was a matter of, because it's that true. And I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying I agree with it. I'm, that's how I'm really.
I'm curious, is there like, I would have assumed that there was some policy in terms of the process of bidding and then, you know, going out, going out to bid and then actually doing the construction, that if you run out of money, you have to tell somebody.
Now, before, before town meeting, before town, before the May, before the May town meeting, bids were in hand.
Yeah.
So in order for you to evaluate or assess what the cost of your renovations are going to be, there was basically three months where it should have been nine to twelve. Three months deadline to do this because we want to go in May.
But there was a year. It was a year.
But the, but the, but the cost estimate didn't, didn't start because the OPM and everyone was, was not on, on contract until December thirtieth of twenty-three.
So then this is all our fault.
But then how can you give a bid if it's not a real number? They should say, this is a, I can't give you a real number. I don't.
Well, I mean, they gave the number that, they gave the best number that they could with the time that they had. Could it have been more of, for example, the facade, the siding, it was completely, it was rotted. So, and that's, that's the example that I used today, I mean, this morning. And that, and I, you know, for example, so you would have been able to, someone would have been able to find the fact that the siding was completely rotted. Yes, I mean, it would have, it would have had more of a detailed evaluation of the building systems, the structural integrity, the electrical, everything. And they, so it was really just a, the time was against everybody.
But, but I'm, but, but, but I mean, and that's fine. I, I get it. Like, if this had all been, oh, shoot, we missed this, we missed that. I'm like, yeah, that happens. It's, it's, that, that's what the contingency is for. And in some cases, you totally miss things and it's way more expensive. But I'm saying, at some point, the, the, the project team said, okay, we're going to spend two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of change orders that didn't, weren't required as part of the building commissioner saying you have to do this or the building's falling down, that they, they must have known that it was going over budget. And my question is like, who, like, don't we need to know when the budget is done and the contingency is gone? Like, is there no policy that says, after you spend all the contingency money and there's nothing left, you have to tell somebody that we're out of money and we're going to need to borrow more? Like, I'm, I'm legitimately like, I'm kind of flabbergasted that with all the procurement process, that doesn't exist.
Did PMBC come in and give you guys something?
We have not, I don't think I've.
I mean, they're responsible.
Maybe, maybe once, since I've been on the board, we've spoken to them. So I guess, you know, who, who is, I guess, I want to know who's empowered to say, hold on, we're going over budget here.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you think that there, even if PMBC doesn't come to your meetings, wouldn't you think that there would be monthly or quarterly reports of, here's, here we are, here's how much we spent, here's what's left in the contingency, here's what we see coming? Because, because you don't want to find out when you're done. You want to find out when you're ninety percent done.
Maybe those, maybe those got sent to me and I never read them. It's possible.
But it, but it can't just be on one person because one person can make a mistake. I mean, I'm with you, I'm flabbergasted.
I think, step in if I'm, if I'm misinterpreting what happened. But I think the working theory was that they were within budget because they had enough money within the contingencies to cover everything based on the assumption that the HVAC unit and the insulation could wait. And now, upon further review, the idea is, no, we cannot wait. So arguably, they weren't over budget.
I see.
Is that sort of?
Madam Chair, I think that's fair when you talk, when you, when you talk of contingency in the, in the plural sense. And, and I believe it, it was expressed of that culmination of balances from five or six different capital parts that have been sitting there. We can scoop these up and use these for what is, what could potentially.
They shouldn't have been in, those shouldn't have been in that budget period or without more approvals, right? I understand we can do it, but that's basically over adding to a budget on the slide, right? The town approved three point four million and then we're saying, well, we have other money sitting in another piggy bank that we could have allocated for something else.
Right, going to the seat cushions, that, that, that can't be our, our, our go-to plan. And I'm also like, I'm worried that we're like throwing spears at people. I don't want to throw spears at people. Like, look, like, everyone's going to be defensive about this because it's a lot of money and I get it. I really mostly want to make sure this doesn't happen again. And if we need to find some process or to find a process that, to make sure that we don't dip into piggy banks that don't, aren't part of the budget unless there's specific explicit approval from FinCom or from the select board or from the town administrator, I'm fine with that, like, whatever we need to do. But this is, this is kind of embarrassing.
I think, I think you're right. It's two separations to it. We have to deal with what we have in front of us, number one. Number two, we need to make sure that the process moving forward is, whatever it is.
But that's the thing we never do. I mean, come on. I was first with FinCom like twenty-five years ago and we had this same kind of conversation. And we, we are so good at not blaming people and that's awesome. And then we never fix the process. And I think the town is getting tired of us not fixing the process.
Well, I think it's a, in my opinion, the, the, the approach I've taken in my, in my, in my personal life and professional life is when you're dealing with a, you, you, I don't know what's behind that wall. We don't have eyes. So as far as I'm concerned, if we're going to buy, if we're going to buy. So as far as I'm concerned, if we're gonna buy, if we're gonna buy a building, it's automatically, we've gotten it automatically, we're right down to the studs and we look at everything from, from A to Z and that's, and some people say, oh, that's overkill, that's overkill. But in my experience, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be overkill and I think that is a, is a wise exercise to be able to do. I mean, unless you have, the construction next door was ideal, was phenomenal, it was-
I, I would agree with you, but that's not what blew out this budget. I mean, if you just look at these light items, the contingencies by code, there's $260,000 of owner change and $191,000 of scope change, that's what blew out the budget. Not the fact that we didn't take it back, not that you didn't have enough time.
No, but I, 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 the lighting was a question that I had in, in regards to that. I mean, you, you're walking, you're walking through the building, you can tell when you're, when you're gonna write the specs and when you're looking to, to, to upgrade or rehabilitate it, well, the sliding is not efficient. But, and then it just, it, and so it, but they were just gonna, but the, the thought, the thought process was, okay, we will replace that at a future date. We'll be able to identify the, whether it be, whether they start with the low hanging fruit or whether they, they tackle the, the more, the more harder things and just will make replacements as part of the facilities budget going forward.
But that would have meant that these didn't come, come now.
And I understand the decision was made, oh, that's, it's gonna be so much cheaper to do it now, the walls are open, the contractor's here, right? Like, it makes sense to do it now, that's fine. But then they added $190,000 to the budget without asking, or someone added $190,000 without understanding the total impact of it? I mean, you know, I, um, so anyway, I guess, you know, we should talk about how we're gonna deal with this now, like-
Can we just propose that on any large project, the PMBC gives the Select Board monthly updates on the, on where the budget is?
Yeah.
Well, what was the, the whole lead-in about it being rushed though? Is that what the contractor is saying, why the numbers aren't coming in right, or that's what PMBC is saying as well?
This is, this is the conversation from OPM this, this morning with Vertex, our owner's project manager, who basically works for us. And it was, it was, it clearly was expressed to, to the parties to be that the, the amount of time that, that is given for the architect to write the specifications and identify the areas of, of improvement is, there's gotta be, there's, it's not enough time.
And we were under the impression it'd been going on for a year, so I guess if they hadn't, it wasn't enough time, why wouldn't that have been in the proposal? We're giving you these numbers, but we haven't had time to really evaluate it, so-
Well, but, yeah, I mean-
Those caveats were in there, is my understanding.
Well, there was just regular contingencies. I mean, they didn't say we need more time to evaluate this to give you a number, because, I mean, we waited the first time because we didn't feel like we had a vetted number.
And the way I understand it, those, those areas, those areas of concern were expressed to the client. That's all I can, that's all I-
And the client didn't listen.
Sounds like it. Correct. That is correct.
Whatever the process is, we need to fix it before Shea Delain comes down the line.
Yeah, I want to hear what you, your response to what I said.
Oh, I just, having listened in to some of these PMBC meetings, right, um, yes, PMBC could send us a monthly report and we do need some sort of report. I think we need to take the time to make sure it is a report that we will understand and be able to act on. If, if they give us the report that they walk through, I can guarantee you at least I, we won't have, we won't be able to understand where we actually are. So we're gonna have to-
Because it's so far in the weeds.
Yeah. You know, it's, we've got this much done and we've got this much, you know, that's outstanding in this and we've got this much outstanding in that and we've got these that are in this part of the process and that that's part of that part of the process. And I'm sitting here going, well, what's the real number? And they're going, that is the real number.
I, I mean, I think a report that said, here's, here's what's happening and how we think it's gonna impact the final cost, is something they clearly could figure out.
They can. I think, I'm just saying, we need to be really deliberate about what we want to know and make sure that we're expressing it clearly.
Right, I, 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 I mean, it's not the same, but I did a pretty, you know, a six-figure renovation on my house and we got, you know, a bunch of years back and we got a bunch of the way through it and, you know, they said, you know, hey, you can have a bigger bay window here and I went, okay, and how's that gonna affect the, the cost? And they said, it'll be this much, and I said, no, thank you. You know, it's, I don't know.
Yeah. Which, in isolation, is, is clear and able and you can understand it, but against, you know, for, you know, half a dozen vendors at a minimum and their subcontractors and their bills and their change orders each coming in separately and they're outstanding. I'm just saying, we just need to be really thoughtful, right, that's all.
Right. And I think, as we go forward, that really clearly defined roles and responsibilities are really important. And there, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, that Brian isn't here to, because he was sort of in the middle of all this. So I just think, you know, if, if you're gonna think about the process, clear roles and responsibilities, I know that having been through several projects with PMBC, I mean, they feel that they receive a specific charge from administration slash Select Board and that's what they do.
Yeah.
And, you know, that they try to stay within those four, you know, the four corners of the charge. These change orders, I, I may be wrong, but I don't believe PMBC approves the change orders. I think that comes from the administration, whoever that is. And then, once they get that nod, then they try to manage what that has been added to.
PMBC approves of the change orders.
So I think, you know, just a, a clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities. And then, whatever reporting, if you want, you, you should be able to define and receive. I, I think that's, should be a given, certainly in any large project.
So just looking at the sheet, there's three budget items that took the entire contingency that were approved in December, right? Between the bathroom, the security and the lighting, it took up the entire contingency and it was approved in December. So we should have known back five months ago that we were over budget. And we had no contingency left and anything after that would had to be out, right? You have no money left.
Well, if, what, what, but, okay, so we're hearing about the 15-ton unit now, which might be on its last legs or it might not. And we're hearing about insulation now. Would, would we have heard of the, of those two items, quote, five months ago? I don't know whether the OPM or anybody knew of that before Eric started nosing around and trying to figure things out.
But, but, but like, common sense for me dictates, you don't spend your contingency on nice-to-haves, you spend your contingency on things that you have to do in order to get the building habitable. And, and I think if, if, you know, I would have argued, can we please not do the lighting and the wiring because we don't know what we're gonna find in the last three months of the project?
That's fair.
You know, maybe I wouldn't have said that, maybe, maybe I'm too much of a chicken, but I hope I would have said it and that, that, I think that's the kind of thing that, I, I don't know, but I would hope that someone is making those calls.
Well, what you're saying is that, what I'm hearing you say is that the Select Board, as a member of the Select Board, you want to be more involved rather than less involved? You know, is it, is it-
No, like, no, I-
CM's office that's-
No, I, I don't-
Comes together or, again, what are the roles and responsibilities?
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that I want to be more involved, but I want someone to, I want somebody to make that call.
Fair enough.
And it feels like nobody made that call and, and maybe it's me second guessing people who know what they're doing and it could be that this, this overrun is actually gonna save us money in the long run, I don't know.
But I'd love to see an action item come out of this meeting, because if, if we don't have an action item, we'll be doing this again next year. So I would say, if you're ever the Select Board, I mean, we're, can't really be us, it can't really be FinCom, but I think Select Board, you need an action item, even if it's just to study and put it on a future agenda, we have to do something.
Brian, through, through, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, and I, I don't think anyone, anyone disagrees with that and I think this is a pretty tough lesson learned across the board, even though, and I think what, you bring up something very valid, that history's repeating itself, okay? But Fred, you hit upon a really, a really good point. One of the, one of the best investments we've made is a facilities manager. And he has done a great job identifying areas that people or vendors have said, yep, not a problem, and he's, no, that's, that is a problem and it's X, Y, Z. So I think, you know, I, I think we're, we're growing up in many ways-
Fair enough.
That, um, and, uh, from, from hard lessons and we've got, we've got a strong professional on, on board and, and, and I'm, and I'm, I, I absolutely agree with, with the approach of, you just, you gotta look behind every wall, I'm sorry, it's gotta go down to the stud and that's if we're gonna buy a building or renovate any particular building. That's just, that would be, that would be my action.
I think that's the problem, I think we need to make sure we have better financial oversight of these projects as they're running on. I mean, I, I know when we were building the library, I got these reports all the time and, you know, and we made sure we weren't spending our contingencies along the way. We were saving that for anything nice we wanted to add in at the end, right? And this, this project didn't follow that, those rules, right? These contingencies were approved long before, long ago, when they shouldn't have been approved until they knew they had the money for the project.
I don't, I, I don't disagree and I can, and I can just, I can just imagine the position that they had raised. Every time we turned around, it was something else. Everything that was unforeseen, something that was unforeseen. And I'm not, I'm not defending anybody, I completely agree with you, Mr. Almaka. And, and I know that there is, as a matter of fact, and they were comparing it to the Center on Shattered Construction and the money that's gonna be turned back on that. And another thing is, um, this, and also another area that, what is CM at risk. So when you have a CM at risk instead of design bill-
Yeah.
That is a huge difference and the library was, was CM at risk. This wasn't more than 10 million. That's why it was a design bill, it's not eligible for CM at risk. So, which makes it all the more difficult to be able to, to bring that across the finish line with basically a, you know, you're constantly figuring, there's something else, now there's something else, now there's something else.
I think we need someone on these teams that has a financial background who's willing to stand up and say, no.
So I would suggest that we make this one of our goals for the year, is to come up with a set of Select Board expectations on capital projects.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Something that lives, you know, part of, part of the problem is all the churn, right? You know, I'm sitting here going, I wasn't here five years ago. You know, like, mm, Jim wasn't here, you know, most of us weren't in our current positions when all these things were being done. So we need a document that lives beyond our memories, right? Which is all we're, all that we've got right now.
Can, um, can you speak to line 64, what that is? Time delays?
Try it. 64, equitable adjustment for time delays. So yes, the, there was, there would, the contractor had, had certain amount of days to get the, to get the project completed per contract. And there were, uh, there were, uh, there were delays that was not a fault of the contractor, there were other things as a result of change orders in which, which extended them beyond that. And that was the final negotiating figure, I believe, from a, from a higher, from 65,000 and it was negotiated to, down to 40,000.
But you don't know specifically what?
What?
What caused-
What caused the delays?
Yeah. You're saying that there were change orders?
Right. I mean, because, there were a number of different as a result of, of, of the change orders and there was also work that the contractor did pro bono in which, of, of particular issues. I can't speak specific to any specifics right now, but that, that conversation has been done, has been expressed to me, that, so as, as a result with the, the OPM, um, and there were members of, of the team that sat with the contractor and they came away with that number. I probably didn't answer your question, Jerry.
I, I'm sure you answered it the best that you can, I'm just not, not what I was looking for, I guess, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I can't point, I can't say, oh, because of number 17, 28, 32, I, I, I don't have that.
Yeah, I guess I was looking for like, you know, the pipes were frozen, they couldn't get into the building for three weeks or something like, you know, that is unforeseeable because they're looking for us to pay them for unforeseeable charges, so, um-
Right.
If it was for a change order because of something that they didn't see, I just don't think we should penalize for that, so.
The other 63 items that were on the list above that number.
Yeah, yeah.
So, given that, that we need to look at the process separately, are we all in agreement that we need to do the insulation and we need to do this assessment and fix the HVAC before people move in?
Yeah, I believe we do.
Well, HVAC can't be done before they move in, but the insulation-
Correct, because, but the mechanical evaluation, uh, assessment can, can be done while people are in there, but, and the insulation can be done like I had, had expressed on a Friday.
But to-
People moved in.
My understanding is that we need to dismantle that 15-ton unit and bring it down through the building, because it can't go through the roof anymore.
Correct.
So that's gonna cause disruption in that second floor.
Yep, and, um, and in speaking with the, the superintendent today, as for something such as the, uh, the insulation on a Friday, you know, he'll have his staff work remotely. So if that's the case, he's got the, the, the superintendent can, he and his team can work remotely for a specified amount of time.
It's Parks and Rec that'll be the tricky part, right?
Potentially, potentially.
So, do we need to go out to bid for these items again, or is this under the same project?
We're gonna treat them separately.
Separately.
Yes, sir. That would be my recommendation to everybody. So it's gonna, absolutely, we're gonna get the, the mechanical assessment done and the insulation was being through the Green Communities and there was a contractor down there today that was looking at it for, for a price. As a matter of fact, through Green Communities, through Diane Dickinson, a, a superintendent, shuttered parts of this building. They had, they, they've been walking around last week through the building and, and figuring out areas for, how we can shutter it to, to save money on, on utilities here in this building. And, but there were problems with the, with the systems.
So is the plan still to move into this building in June?
June, July, yes. Yep.
I think Eric felt confident he could keep the cooling-
Yes.
-operational through the summer.
Right, yeah.
So is, is the 15-ton unit definitely coming out, or is that still being evaluated?
Well, let's, everything, what system would work best in the building is gonna be evaluated and not necessarily evaluate the existing thing, but really look at what works. Do we go hybrid, do we go completely electric? What would be the best system for that?
But might that be the existing system, or is that definitely coming out?
No way.
Okay.
That won't be the existing system.
So does that existing system come out immediately before people move in?
No.
So?
No, because i- i- if that, it's still, it's still running, it's, it's still feasible at this point. It's, like I had, I had explained earlier, it's not a matter of whether it's going to fail, it's a matter of- It's, like I had, I had explained earlier, it's not a matter of whether it's going to fail, it's a matter of when. And they were already passed, all the units that are remaining there are well beyond their life expectancy. So whether it's, it fails in next March or April or this November, it, I mean, the, the system replacement has to, and people will be in, the offices will be, will be occupied.
My concern is, is we're saying that we rush the process to begin with. We have a chance to just keep everybody where they are in their area now and not rush the process one more time. And then six months from now saying, why did we let people run in, walk, go into this building?
Right, I don't, I, I do not disagree with that. And it's, and I know that there was a lot of money that has already been identified within this project for moving, for considering, there's, I, I said the exact same thing, what, what's the rush? I mean, stay through September and, and.
So who, who's, who's in the school department in the rush to go home?
Um.
Where's Park and Rec?
They probably both are, they probably both are, and it would be, it'd be something that, it's, they're in the, they're in, you know, a new location. They've got nice new things, new furniture, things of that nature, so.
Does it make sense to at least go out to bid, get the bids, look at the process and then decide whether people can move in there or not?
I, I'm.
Forehand?
At, at, 100%, I'm, I'm, the, the main priority is to identify, identify the, the insulation and then the mechanical person, and then the systems continue to work and, and sit down with Parks and Rec and the school, and the school administration and, and say.
Can, can we turn around the, do, do we have to pay the 200 and then get reimbursement for the 80 from the Green Communities?
I don't know that, those details yet, Mr. Chairman? I'll, I'll find that out.
Just, just a, no question, I'm just trying to anticipate. So we're gonna do the full mechanical inventory, and I can imagine someone saying, y'all didn't do that already? And.
That is correct. The answer is, that is correct.
Okay, I mean, I agree with you, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't sit well with the town. One would assume that after we do the full mechanical inventory, there's gonna be a laundry list, shopping list of things we then have to buy or fix or install, right?
That's related to a new system going in?
Yeah.
That's the 300.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I guess I'm just, I've always been taught that when you have to go back and ask for more money or more time, do it once. And we're now gonna go, have to come up with some money for what we see, and then maybe come up with more different money and time after the mechanical inventory. Is that right?
No, because the focus is on the two areas, the insulation and, and getting the mechanicals on there, and that's it.
Okay.
That's all that's on, unless I get direction differently from the select board, that's all that's on my agenda.
So let's take this separately for the moment. We say we're doing the insulation now, we have to do it before anyone moves in, right?
Yes, that is ideal.
Now, the mechanical, we think we can limp along until?
We don't know. Could be September, could be July. We don't know.
So my understanding when we bought the building and this whole process started, as they did in inventory of the mechanical systems, to say which HVAC systems we're going to last, that's one of the things I asked when they started, was to replace the, which HVAC systems are going to make it, and which ones do we need to replace right away? And I thought they replaced some of them already.
They, they, they did as part of this project, there were some units that were replaced.
Right.
There were two very large units, one of which was empty, took off the cover. The other one is the current 15-ton one. So it is, that's basically what is, what's going to be continuing within the heating and cooling of the building is that 15-ton plus the other units that are there, that were not removed and not replaced. And I don't know how many of those were. I know, I think there was potentially four or five replaced, and the rest were.
So, so the gist of my question is, can we wait? And what confidence level do we have on waiting until next May's budget to come up with the $300,000 to replace that unit, when we can do it as a normal capital item?
We won't know until we do this $50,000 maintenance, uh, mechanical assessment.
It's, I think that's a, that can answer a lot of questions that you would all have, and myself, and get a better understanding of a confidence level, whether there is confidence there or there is, there isn't.
What move-in dates are they working with currently?
I wanna say like July 8th or something like that, maybe even, I think there was something sooner. But there's a, there's a punch list of 166 things Eric is doing, so.
He's doing them all himself?
He and George.
Wow.
Yeah.
What about the rest of the, what about the rest of these change orders? What about all the, the ca, the re, the other $400,000 so that it's not included in the, you know, the 300 grand for the HVAC and the 200 grand for the, for the insulation? Right, like, so, so, so there, there's 600,000, 650 or whatever here, right?
Yep.
This does or doesn't include the $300,000 for the, for the HVAC unit?
Well, it's, if you see on line 47, it's got the HVAC unit replacement for 307,000.
Okay.
Okay.
So then if you take that out.
That's not, that's not calculated.
Not only approved.
Okay, so, but, so, right, so what I'm getting at is, there's still some numb hundred thousand dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars on the bottom line here that have been approved, which we don't have money for, or we do have money for, where are we, where are we getting it?
The green, the green area on page two?
Yeah.
That is, that, those are, those are pending amounts which, that is still, that's still being vetted with the OPM, the architect and the contractor, that, that will then go to PBC for review. And the remaining funds, what is there, it's covered, this is covered.
So everything that has been approved is covered?
Yes, sir.
And how?
Or is pending, yes.
But it's covered by the capital projects that we pulled money out of, or?
And the original contingency.
Okay, all right, got it, okay. So the green things are the ones that were, the green things and the HVAC unit are the things that are not covered at this point?
And insulation.
No, the green things are covered.
Things are covered.
So the, the two things that are not covered, the insulation and the HVAC.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And do we have a sense of when the inventory could be completed?
Oh, you mean the assessment? I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
Assessment, sorry.
No, we do not, because I had just provided the, the, my recommendation to the team from the meeting this morning, the two parallel, two, two parallel tracks, and depending upon what was gonna come out of this meeting, I was then, that's gonna be the first thing I would do tomorrow morning with Eric.
Who does the assessment?
There would be a professional engineer that would, I believe it's an engineer, a mechanical engineer that would, that's, that has, you know, energy in terms of what, what would be the best system.
And does that have to go out to bid?
Yep. Yes, that, Chair.
So that's a couple of months?
I'd give it till August, September, just, I would push it out and hopefully deliver sooner.
So.
So.
We, it would be very tough to move in before that was completed? Sorry, sorry, it would be, it would be, it would be tough to have that completed before the, sorry.
Exactly, yeah, even if we tell, even if they decided to wait till fall, it's not gonna help much, is what I'm hearing.
Will, will that assessment just focus on the most effective method of moving forward? Or will it also identify any issues that we still don't know about in the building?
It, this will be focused heat and air conditioning, HVAC. So anything that's related to that, anything that would, that's, that's recommended to invest in that building will be, will be called up. Anything beyond that, plumbing issue.
Sure, sure, but we, we, hopefully there will be no surprises after this assessment on the HVAC front.
We, we hope.
Well, fingers crossed.
Right, right.
Where are you having them?
The, the, the moving is what we, might feel called a one-way door. Once we've moved, you know, we're, we're done. So I think, I think some of the concern is, we're, yes, ATRAC, but we're confident that we can move and live with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, this, this next phase in the project, I'm, I'm, I'm very, very comfortable and I'm confident in the team that we have, that will be able to, will have a clear path presented to all of you. It will, probably in all likelihood, it's not gonna be an, an expensive path, but it will be efficient and thorough and done in a, in a timely manner with not being rushed and not dragging up.
I would like confirmation that that 15-ton unit or whatever we're doing with it can be done while the building is occupied. Or how many days we have to shut down the building to get rid of that?
Fair enough, understood. Yes, sir.
Or that we just leave it there?
They back it down and out, or are they, or are they, I thought they were taking it through the, through an exterior wall?
No, no, they're gonna dismantle it and then bring it, there's, we talked about that this morning. We don't want to open anything up in the world, nothing.
I thought it was coming out of a wall, though. No, it's going down and out.
Down and out.
Yeah, so I don't see how, I mean, we won't have a functioning elevator, for all intents and purposes, for the folks that are there trying to work.
Well, but that would, well, I'm, let's see what our options are.
Yeah, just saying.
Thank you.
Through a window on the second floor.
I was thinking the exact same thing.
Have we also confirmed that there's insulation in the walls while we're at this?
There is none.
There is none.
The envelope, the entire envelope of the building has to be insulated.
So we're insulating the walls at the same time we're doing the ceiling, or we're?
Correct, everything's being done at the same time.
But not the auditorium, right? Or are we gonna do the auditorium too?
Everything's got, everything is gonna be, that, that's part of the back portion, we want to, we want to include that.
We're gonna include that.
So Steve, where do we get the money?
Well, actually, before we get to that.
Your side, no, I'd like to see two numbers.
What does it cost to just swap out the 15-ton units? If a man who often designed the most wonderful system in the world, and what does that cost?
As long as we say, well, how long will the 15-ton unit run? And what it'll, what will it cost to run for the next 20 years of its lifespan?
That's, that's sort of justifying the most wonderful system.
25 years old, there's no 20-year lifespan.
No, no, I'm saying if we swap it out and the new one is 20, runs for 20 years, but we're paying a hundred thousand dollars a year to run it.
Yeah, I think what Eric, I thought the idea was get rid of the 15-ton unit and bring in 35.
Yeah, that's what I remember here.
Which will be easier to get in and out.
And presumably more efficient.
And more efficient, yeah.
Whatever the swap-out is.
Yeah.
Versus the upgrade.
But what I heard was hybrid and this and that and something else. So I'd like to know, just swap them out the cheapest way you can with quality equipment, a hundred grand.
Well, isn't that what the mechanical assessment does?
Right.
Yeah, so that's what we'll find out once the assessment's done.
Is there IRA money for these things too?
I don't know. I, I do, all, all that I do know is when I, when I asked whether there was Green Communities money would apply towards the HVAC and the heating system also, and the insulation. And the only, it's only eligible if the, the whole building is electric.
Well, I know there's IRA money if I insulate my house, so I'm wondering if there's IRA money if we insulate that building?
Well, so Green Communities would.
No, no, but they're still.
Stun that.
Yeah, we can still get IRA money. They don't know about Green Communities money. We're getting IRA money for the solar panels, even though it's state-led part of it. There's IRA money.
IRA?
Inflation Reduction Act.
Thank you.
That's the, you know, you get the 30% credit on your taxes for energy improvements and solar panels and things like that. The town gets something similar, we should be getting something similar for the solar panels if someone files the proper paperwork.
Okay.
And the same, I don't know if there, there might be hy, money for hybrids on that too. It's an energy improvement, you might be able to get it, as long as we do it quickly before it goes away.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Let's do it quick.
Well, quickly means I think before the end of the year, probably. They can't probably change in the middle of the tax year. It'd be very hard to do.
So 50,000 for the assessment and 120,000 for the installation. We just happen to have 171,000 in our reserve fund. However, that needs to be spent before the end of this fiscal year, which we're probably not gonna be ready to do if we have to go to bid.
And, and Steve, remember please that the, our reserve fund, we've already promised, I think, 65,000 to Council on Aging for the position that they were.
Now, this is next fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
On June 30th.
Okay, okay, I, I just, yeah.
Good thought.
Yeah.
It'll be 30-something thousand, you know, and then in person, that's 60,000.
The insulation, I believe, that company's on a state bid list, because that is through Green Communities, the contractor. So that's a matter of identifying the funding source and, and then working that out and getting the insulation done, scheduling that. So I, I can't imagine that that cannot, at least in being encumbered between now and June 30th. And maybe spent by the middle, by July 15th, a check cut or something. But, but, but I'll have to look into the assessment of the mechanicals, and I will let everyone know.
Maybe want to check with Michelle if we can apply, if we can take the money out of the reserve fund and apply it to the project.
Okay.
Like the annual project, that way you can roll into the next year. If you treat it as a separate, standalone thing.
Yep.
We may not be able to roll it, but check with Michelle, because I'm not certain.
Okay. Okay, okay.
But know that there's that time constraint on these funds, so.
And maybe I misheard, Jim, I thought I heard you say that schools was kicking in towards the assessment.
So.
Was 50,000 after there?
So the original thought with this 470 was our reserve fund and school choice funds to cover the entire thing. And the school, the chair, the Karen I met with the chair of the school committee, he agreed to fund X amount of dollars that would help us fund this. I haven't heard officially from the school committee yet, with the, looking at you, Janie, down there.
And what's X?
Uh, 300.
Okay, we're looking at every damn seat cushion. Hope we don't find any.
It just happens to come in exactly at 470 right here.
Well, what?
So, so that money, that money is available into next year, because it's coming out of your school choice, so they can spend it at any point in time. It's this 170 from our reserve fund that has the time constraint to it.
That money from school choice, does that? Under?
School committee has the authority to spend school choice.
Right, but wasn't some of their, wasn't schools also kicking in some of their school choice money to defer some of the shaker projects? Or is that a different bucket?
No, they were handling some of the projects from their capital plan through school choice funds. And we were putting that money that we would have spent into the school stabilization account.
Okay, okay, just, just.
That's still the plan. And our discussion with, with Justin and the chair of the school committee was, this is outside of that, and we don't know whether we can repay the school department for these funds.
That's the part.
And he was fine. He, he was fine.
And he stressed he was always.
We always have what we call the seat cushion money, and we've just gone after it and gone after it and gone after it. And there's, we're getting pretty darn close to a time when we, when there's nothing. But, yeah, gotta heat the building, so.
The work has to be done. If it goes to town meeting in November with the school building there also, there's no way the town says okay to this. Not after, no.
I agree, I think, I think. I agree. I think, I think. Okay.
So it was, it was very good that this, like, thought of the school department, if they vote to do so, stood up and.
Oh, I think it's fabulous. I think, no, I mean, this is great. This is.
Some dollars.
This, this is more cooperation than I can recall us almost ever having amongst the three boards. It's just.
As, as Justin said, and correctly, it says, you know, it's the town's money. It's, it's a different philosophy now than it used to be.
Absolutely. No, I'm digging it.
He understands, and just know that at some point in time, if they're sure, they will come back to the town and say, we're sure. We have to be ready for that, that's all.
Yep, absolutely.
But the alternative is to go back to town meeting in November. You know, spend what we can out of the reserve fund and the difference for the HVAC systems, tap to town meeting. That's the alternative.
All right, if that system fails before the money's allocated and it's replaced, then people who, once they've moved in, they couldn't remain there. It controls too much of the building?
Without, with complete understanding of it, I, I, I would, I, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
So I spared Eric coming tonight. We're gonna walk.
But, but if that were to happen, that's why we have the general stabilization funds for which are, cover emergencies exactly like that.
Correct, but you can't, but you can't get at that until you go to town meeting. So theoretically, what your stabilization fund is.
Yes, Eric thought. The difference between the heating and the cooling situation is that he thinks he can locate and provide replacement parts for the cooling part.
Okay, so.
But the heat is where he's not sure. He's gonna be, he would be able to source something if it gets broken.
Because I think those units take a while to get too much and make the decision to do that, so.
Jim, the only, the watch out is the town traditionally does year-end transfers and won't pay any money for year-end transfers, which is okay, but, um, there may be some true-up in the fall if there are issues where we normally would handle it out of the reserve fund. So just be aware of that.
Well, in the, the fall town meeting transfers, that's the next fiscal year. So any true-up, if we run our reserve fund to zero, which it looks like we may be doing.
That's all I'm saying. It's for.
Then if they have true-ups they need to do, they need to find it within other budgets in time for town. So, right, one department is short, the other department kicks it over to.
Right, so just watch out for you and your finance team. If we do this, there is not a cookie jar to do the traditional true-ups. You're gonna have to take care of it.
Right, and we, the town contingency is empty.
Exactly.
It's just a heads up.
Yeah, Robyn, Kim, Michelle and I, we had that conversation because tonight we have, we've got the exercise of the transfers on for tonight, and we know that, we don't have the complete numbers, but we know there's no reliance on anything outside of just within the, within our own budget. Yes, sir.
It's okay.
If I can just have one clarification, Madam Chair.
All right.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you wanted two numbers. The cost to swap out the 15-ton unit and what's the second one?
Then whatever the, in this magnificent system.
Oh, then the, then the assessment, then, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Are you ready to move on?
Well, they have to make a motion.
For what?
Well, we would wait for a recommendation from the select board to request a reserve fund transfer, and then we would vote the reserve fund transfer.
So recommend it. It's unanimous.
All those in favor?
I.
We recommend.
We recommend.
Do you want to call Chuck and Gary?
Yes. So the question, if I'm in the finance committee, do we want to send $170,000, $120,000 for insulation and $50,000 for the assessment to the Indian Hill project?
One is a strong word in that.
So we?
Second by Brad, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're officially broke.
So we don't have to meet in.
The most enthusiastic quote I've ever heard in my five years on the board. Oh, we had a few a few months ago.
All right, so if, if we can't carry this over, then we're gonna have to.
Figure something out.
Figure something out.
Understood.
Fiscal year.
Got that right here. No, no, we'll figure it for this fiscal year. Yeah, no, that will be.
So technically, we shouldn't, this request, the, to put the money into the 34th Street project?
I don't know who can. We're gonna handcuff ourselves if we can't.
Okay.
Since the, the project officially closed last week, right, Jim? Did they do the sign-off last week, what Eric said?
Signed off.
Oh, oh, for occupancy, yeah. That, that should happen this week, the CO.
It's a nice sign out front. I like the sign. You just gotta see the sign.
It's nice.
Yeah. There's no plaque in, in the building. They cut.
Smart.
The only other item that I have for the finance committee was just to let everybody know, select board already knows this, but they'll be meeting next, two weeks, two weeks on, on June 9th, between the select board, finance committee, school committee, and the Shaker Lane Building Committee to discuss the new costs that are coming in this week. So we'll have that meeting on Monday, and then there is an open house at, at Shaker Lane on the 11th, Wednesday, the 11th, starting at 6:30 with a tour, and then question and answers, I think, starting around 7:15. So we hope to see good attendance from the public at that.
Is that ninth our regular select board meeting?
Yeah.
What about having a booth at Third Thursday? Informational booth. I don't know, they get a pretty good crowd.
It'll be.
Discuss that with, yeah, the outreach committee, Michelle, Kane.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Thank you.
Motion for a jury. My favorite motion.
Does the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Get ready to talk about town boundary markers?
Think so.
So, I requested this one, so if everyone recalls, a couple months ago, some members of the Atkins Select Board reached out to us, said they were going to go and find the mark, the granite markers to separate Acton and Littleton and go and mark them, and invited us to come along. I responded. I believe we're going to walk them on Friday afternoon if we can find them. I believe there's four of them. They're not, I don't know that they've located all of them or not. But in this process, I was talking to our town clerk, who says that these, you know, by state law, they're supposed to be marked every five years. I don't know when the last time any of them were marked. So unless there's objections, I was going to reach out to the other surrounding towns and start organizing something to go and mark our other boundaries.
Good idea.
From some of them, from the town clerk, I don't know that they've been marked since the 30s. So it might be a fun experiment. If nothing else, it's often a good walk in the woods. So I will, unless there's objections, I'm going to reach out to the other boards and let people know when those are scheduled, and after walking them with Acton, I'll probably know what the process is or know how to go and mark them. I think we just paint an L on one side with a date. But you have to do it in a nice weather where the paint will actually dry properly at least. So I have the folder from Diane where all of the markers are supposed to be, so.
Fascinating.
She's entrusted, she, she stressed that this morning, how she entrusted you with that.
I know.
So I move that the board vote to appoint Mark Rombacher and a designee to contact surrounding towns to set a date to paint boundary markers in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 42, Section 2. It shall be completed every five years thereafter by two select board members of the town or by two substitutes designated by select board in writing to the other town with which they are working. Paint or other suitable marking materials may be used.
Second.
We don't have to, we don't have to do the designee tonight, the second person tonight?
I think we'll just do the, I think we can just designate him at the time, at the time we're actually going to mark.
Okay.
So you're just reaching out now?
I'm just gonna reach out now. I will tell you that I believe Andy Kern's coming with me to walk the, and possibly Linda Stein.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to approve route for the August 17th, 2025 Tour de Cure bicycle fundraising event.
This is, just really just a matter of traveling through the, through the community. It's not hosted by, by Littleton or anything like that. It's, 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 it's been done in the past, and the chief and both chiefs are, are okay with it.
Okay, any questions?
Nope. Done it before.
Move the select board vote to approve the request of the American Diabetes Association to use town roads for the Tour de Cure on Sunday, August 17th, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, I think we'll table, review, discuss and assign select board liaisons to town boards and committees. We'll hold that over until next meeting, since Gary and Chuck aren't here. So that would mean.
Just give them all the assignments?
We could. That would be the other option. And so failing that, we can move on to approving fiscal year 2025 transfers.
All right, this is, um, this is a housekeeping thing. We do this every year in preparation for, we won't, you'll do on your July 14th meeting, because everything has to be done by July 15th, and you will get the, the final numbers and transfers will be requested at the, at the 14th meeting. So everything is closed up.
I'll take a motion.
Move the select board vote to authorize the town accountant to transfer any amount from a departmental or other appropriation to any other appropriation to address any deficits when, within the town of Littleton fiscal year 2025 operating budget.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have review and vote on proposed select board July through December schedule and October 28th special town meeting schedule. Did anybody get a chance to take a look at that and see if.
I did.
They have any questions or concerns?
Good with me. Like, good with my schedule.
I missed the July 14th meeting, but I'm fine otherwise.
Unacceptable.
You're fired.
You'll change your, you'll, you'll change your plans.
You will attend.
All right, I'll take a motion to, let's see, approve.
Move that the select board vote to schedule regular meetings for the remainder of 2025 as reflected in the attached schedule, and move the select board vote to approve the October 28th, 2025 special town meeting schedule as reflected in the attached schedule.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, we have an application to use the Common by Janine Wood for a rally on June 14th, 2025.
I see you're not to yell at.
Would you care to come to the podium and?
That way the lovely, our viewing audience can hear and see you.
It, it would be easier to answer questions, I guess. Do you, do you just want a, a summary of what will happen? Yeah, okay. So, beginning, on June 14th, we plan to arrive at the Common.
Amen, Adels.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Janine Wood. I live at 12 Christina Street. On July, on June 14th, we plan to arrive at the Common around 9:30 and set up. I have, I have a possible yes from Kelly's Music School, which is a town treasure, and people from there have offered to come and set up their sound system, that they'll use a little bit of music for the event, and also will be able to have a speaker, a speaking system, a sound system for our speakers. The plan is that the rally will begin around 10:00. People arriving with signs, music, happiness, a little bit of dancing. Around 10:15, 10:20, we have some speakers that have offered to speak. I have tentative yeses from Mara Dolan, Representative Margaret Scarsdale, and some music. We hope to have maybe a food truck come park on the side, and so that we have music and food, and people will hold signs and be supportive of each other until about 1 o'clock, when I have some supersized garbage bags to hand out so that we go through the whole Common and leave the Common exactly as we found it at 9:30. And that's the plan.
Were the food trucks part of the application, or is that, would that be a, a change?
I believe I mentioned it on the application, but I'm not gonna swear to it. I also had no yeses at the time, and I have a tentative at this point, so it's not, it's not something that I have actually written in stone at this point. This is me going, hey, that would be fun.
If, if Chief Pennard has no issues with the food trucks, I don't see it in this application. If he has no issues with it, I think that's absolutely fine to go forward with it, subject to his approval?
I did bring it up with him.
Okay.
When I talked to him.
Okay, then.
And, and it's just a matter of them parking on Stevens Street in one of the parking spaces.
I will check with the town clerk, because I think there are limited places where food trucks are allowed in town, and I'm not positive that that's one of them.
Yeah, I'll, Diane.
Just, I would, I'm fine with it if it's, it's a weird regulation. I don't understand it at all, but I'm, but I know there are limited places.
Board of Health?
Uh, no, the Board of Health wouldn't care once the food truck's permitted.
Okay.
But I mean, as long as, if you spoke to Chief Pennard about it, then I'm sure it's fine.
I mean, the companies we're talking about are known in the air, like, you know, local, a donut truck, a pizza truck. I figure, you know what, like, food and music is a way for everybody just to have fun and, you know, nothing bad's gonna happen if you have enough music and food. That's my theory.
This is true. This is true.
I have no concerns.
I have no concerns, just, yeah, I would just say just double-check and make sure that we're all set with that, and, yeah.
And you said until noon?
1:00.
1:00.
I think I put 10 to 1:00, did I?
Uh, it's 9:00 to noon in the motion.
It just says 10 o'clock.
It says 9:00 to noon in the event overview. Let's see, 10:00 AM start time in the application, though, so.
But maybe 9:00 for setup?
Well, yeah.
So then the question is about when, until when?
Your email said 10:00, so.
I don't know if there was.
The email from Pennard says it's 9:00 to 12:00.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't think 9:00 didn't.
I'm also not concerned about that. I still will approve it.
I, yeah, I don't, I. I, yeah, I don't, I don't have anything planned from 12 to 1:00. I kind of had it up there as, I'm gonna have, there's gonna be people and some music and some food. Do you really wanna push them off or do you wanna let them just chill out and?
I don't think you have to push them off. It's just a matter of what your, the music probably would have to stop effectively, right? More than the people leaving, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think-
You can't be encouraging them to stay, but you can't tell necessarily make, force them to leave.
Well, I, yeah, I doubt people are gonna wanna play music past then and I think Kelly might want his sound system back, so, you know.
If I may through the chair, Ms. Wood, did, uh, can you please explain to the Select Board about, did you reserve the Sturt's room for something?
Oh, that's for June 9th. That's, that's, that's June 9th.
That's something else.
That's something else, I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought it, I thought it-
And, and I'm not the one who reserved that.
Oh, you were not?
No.
I'm sorry.
I, I mean, like, I know who it is and what they're doing and I, I think I'm, they've asked me to come to, so.
I'm sorry, I got, I got a, I got a confusion.
Too many emails flying around.
I'm sorry?
Lots of emails flying around, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Are you good?
Yep.
All right.
As far as I'm concerned, we're good.
Is there any, we're good?
Good.
Move the Select Board vote to approve the use of the Lower Littleton Common for a rally to raise awareness of the protection of the Constitution on June 14th from 9:00 to 1:00?
I would love if you would put 1:00.
9:00 to 1:00.
Second.
Yes.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Ms. Wood, they, they'll, the Select Board will, will sign this tonight?
Okay.
So once we get the, your insurance certificate, then we'll release this to you.
So I don't have an insurance certificate at this time because insurance certificates come from insurance policies. And I'm not part of a group that is insured.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking me to do as far as having a cert, an insurance certificate and, and other times I've not needed it, so this is kind of a new requirement.
It is, okay.
Yes.
The, the way, the way, the way I understand it, you need, you would need proof of insurance to hold something on town, on town property. In that, something.
What kind of insurance?
I don't, I don't know. I'll, I, I'll, I'll make sure it's confirmed for you in the morning.
I, I appreciate that because I, like, this is not, um, this is me as an individual inviting people.
Okay.
So like, I'm not part of an insured group.
Understood.
So, and so I'm not really sure where we would go with that, so.
Okay, I, I, I thought that, so you did not have this conversation really when you were seeking with my office?
Yeah, I talked to your office and they had brought it up and I called around. That's how I know what an insurance certificate is.
Okay.
Because I called around the, the people that had insured the garden club and they, they insure the garden club. But I'm not part of an insured group. So getting a certificate, I mean, like, I have personal insurance.
Right.
Um, so I'm not sure where we would go, how we would do that.
Okay, let's not jump to conclusions. Let's figure out, you know, let's figure out how we can, how we can work together and accomplish this, okay? So I'll, I'll let, I'll let, I'll let Lisa know. And then, um, I'll, I'll probably have to, you know, ask, we'll probably have to, the town council just understand, and just understanding your position and your capacity at this point. So let's see how we can make it work.
Awesome. Give me a call and, you know, whatever.
Lisa has your number.
Yes, and I live right there.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Vote to approve an amendment to the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Acton and the town of Littleton for an electrical inspector.
Right, this is an amended one of version, this was, this has not been updated for quite a while and Ryan felt that, uh, the, this was brought to his attention many months ago and, and he felt that he wanted to make sure he closed the loop on this for the electrical inspector that we share with, with, with Acton and Acton has, has approved it.
So I was a little confused by this because the amendment looked like we were paying for everything?
No, we're not.
Littleton shall pay the inspectors stipend each fiscal year for the, for its vehicles. The amount should be set by Littleton. The stipend should, it doesn't say anything about what Acton's paying. Littleton shall pay your- Section 4.1 deleted its entirety, replaced with, Littleton shall be responsible for paying the full amount of wages and benefits due to the inspectors.
So there, there were specific sections that are amended here, you know, which will have changes through town council, but the, the, the other main language still enforceable. It shows that Acton pays, pays an amount and Littleton pays, pays an amount. I don't have the entire, the entire agreement with me because that's why they have just Sections 4.1 and 4.2 and 15, so we're sorry.
But what's in the package shows that we're paying everything.
Littleton shall be responsible for paying the full amount of wages and benefits due to the electrical inspector in accordance with the standard payroll practices of Littleton.
Right, it's our electrical inspector.
Right.
So it's, it's just like the nurse situation that we have with Acton. They're, they're fronting it, they're paying everything. We're reimbursing them a certain amount every single, every, every quarter and that's reflected in, in that agreement. And without confirming, I, I can only, I can only imagine that that's the exact same situation here in this, in, uh, for the electrical inspector because they are employed by, he is employed by us.
The town council reviewed this.
Town council made these changes, yes.
So I'm not particularly comfortable signing it until I see the rest of the agreement because it just says we're paying. It doesn't say what Acton's paying and what we see here, right? I trust town council did their job, but it's irresponsible for me to sign something that I don't know what the other part says.
I kind of, I kind of agree, like, without seeing, without seeing the whole, what, what, what is being replaced, a red line would have been great because we would have known, like, how it's being defined.
Understood, all right. That's, that's more than fair.
So we'll bring that to the next meeting?
Yes, please.
Minutes?
No issues for me.
Mark?
Nope. Move the Select Board vote to approve the meeting minutes for the Select Board meeting on May 12th, 2025.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Matthew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
By Matthew, seconded by Mark. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good night, Littleton!